The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then I'll read our mission statement. "We educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to achieve and succeed in our diverse world." Next is our open forum. And this is a time for members of the public to speak before the board. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name, address, and any other contact information. As a reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes. And please know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits the board from discussing matters brought during the public participation period of the meeting agenda. If the board would want any additional or clarifying information from you, a member of the administration will be in contact with you to follow up on behalf of the board. So I have one person that would like to speak before the board. I'll call out Mark Stroshine.
Good evening.
Good morning.
I am Mark Stroshine, Green Bay resident. I live at 823 Ernst Drive, 54304. I own the home and I'm a property taxpayer. Most of you know me as the Green Bay East Agro-Science Natural Resource Instructor and FFA Advisor. The school district is fortunate to currently have Agro-Science Natural Resources programs at Lombardi, Washington, Red Smith, and Edison Middle Schools, and at Green Bay Southwest, Preble, and East High Schools. I am unsure how many of you are aware that this is the annual National FFA Week celebration going on across our country. Additionally, and more importantly, to my presence here tonight and the presence of my teaching colleagues behind me, is the fact that on Thursday, February 23rd, will be the 100th anniversary of the Smith-Hughes Act being signed into law. Senator Hope Smith and Representative Dudley Hughes, both from the state of Georgia, advanced the legislation that allows for agricultural education to be taught in public schools. Since that time, the other career and technical education subjects have come to be across the country. I believe to provide a rich, diverse array of career and technical courses to encourage our youth to think outside the box and possibly pursue a career in one or more CTE area. As school board members, I am sure you are aware that the Agro-Science Natural Resource curriculum has been revised, renewed, and reinvigorated in the animal science and plant science programs of study. Our current natural resources program exists for many years in a status quo atmosphere. It is my hope and the hope of my district teaching colleagues that this subject area is broadened too. The Green Bay area is so blessed to have a rich selection of career opportunities for students to pursue, not least of which is the subject area of Agro-Science Natural Resources. Have you been to a grocery store recently, out to eat, planning your February plantings? No, not really, even though our weather has been crazy. Driven by the New World Headquarters of Shriver Foods? Possibly received flowers from one of our local florists, such as Schrader's Flowers, who has been in business for over 100 years itself? Toured the Wildlife Sanctuary? Adopted a forever pet from a local pet adoption agency? Went to Barkhausen, the Botanical Gardens within the NWTC footprint? The Aquaponics and Aquaculture Program, connection between Southwest and NWTC? And the list goes on. I am sure you have other favorite businesses, professional service groups, or other organizations you could add. From my research, Preble's program has been in consistent mode since 1957, so 60 years. Green Bay East, West, and Southwest programs came to be several years later. The research that I've done indicates that those FFAs were chartered in 1969, with ag courses being taught a couple of years prior to that. I ask that as you review all phases of your work as school board members or school district administrators, and you have a myriad of tasks to work through, please do not lose sight of the entire career and technical education pathways of study. But as a person who is completing his 31st year as an Agro-Science Natural Resource Instructor and FFA Advisor with the school district, please pay special attention to the program I am so proud to be part of. I thank you for your time. And Ms. Kirchma and Mr. C., we've purchased a cake that has the logo of the Smith-Hughes Act from 100 years of existence. It was presented in a contest. I believe the Spencer, one of the Spencer FFA members in Spencer, Wisconsin, won the contest. So we thank you also. Ms. Kirchma's FFA president spoke at tonight's Green Bay City Council meeting. So we wish to enlighten you about National FFA Week and Smith-Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who do you want in the picture?
Mark, come on back.
Photo opportunity.
Don't drop it.
It reminds me of our tree logo.
Yeah, yeah. Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board this evening?
Who brought ice cream? Just checking.
Seeing none, we will move on to roll call. Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
Lecca?
Here.
Dor.
Here.
Janz?
Excused.
Maloney?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Sinclair?
Here.
Yang?
Here.
We have six board members present this evening. Also at the table to my left is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our two intercity student council members, Grace Sinclair, who's president from Preble, and Rose Yang from West High School. Welcome. Also at the table is Sandra Heller, our board secretary. Next, I would entertain a motion for approval of the following minutes. Regular board meeting, January 16th, 2017. Special board meetings, January 23rd, February 13th. Special board meetings, closed sessions, January 23rd and February 6th. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes have been approved. We have, next is, we have no communications to place on file, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Langenfeld for superintendent's update.
Very brief tonight, just to update us on the upcoming calendar. We're moving into the month of March. March 6th is our teaching and learning work session here in the boardroom, immediately followed by the organizational support work session. And then the regular board meeting is March 13th. So not that those are earlier in the month than typical, because we have our spring break coming on March 20th through the 24th. That's the calendar, and I have no discussion items, just a couple of important success stories I'd like to share with you. Last Friday, there was a celebration at Southwest High School. They have a week where they honor and appreciate kindness and being nice, and they celebrated that day. But in addition, as part of the surprise, Southwest High School graduate and Southwest High School principal Rod Bone was honored as a Southwest distinguished alumni. And so his plaque and his story will be forever on the wall at Southwest High School. And I think his parents were able to join, and siblings, and it was just a lovely surprise. He was quite, quite taken by surprise, I think, and staff worked really hard, so he wouldn't be surprised. So that was very nice. And the other is our own Diane Dersch, our Chief Technology and Information Officer. She was awarded the 2017 International Society in Education Making It Happen Award, given in partnership with the Wisconsin Education Multimedia and Technical Association as well. So congratulations, Diane. There's some wonderful things happening in the district. I did attend Sing Out at the Widener, and we had many of our show choirs represented from the district. They were all outstanding, and also Lombardi had their play Aladdin, which was superior. So great things happening in our schools. That concludes my report.
All right. Next, we have our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Mike Lecco.
Thanks, Brenda. All right, John Magus is going to join us at the table and introduce a couple of staff members looking forward to our presentation this evening on Green Bay Public Schools 4K and Head Start program.
Sure, and I'm just going to grab one more chair in just a moment, but I wanted to introduce Sally Jansen and Mary McCabe, who are in charge of our Head Start program as well as our 4K. And, thank you. So they have been doing such a wonderful job, and when we think about the 4K and Head Start opportunities, they are really incredible. I think of the first opportunity that people have to be exposed to the board, or exposed to the district, rather, is really, really important. And the high-quality programming that we have is second to none. You'll find that the information that they share in the report confirms that the effects and results of really good 4K programming, Head Start programming, and early intervention with students pays off huge dividends throughout the course of their career in the district. So we're very thankful for the work that they've done, and they have a lot of information that they can share about where we are in our current programming as well as next steps.
Hi.
Hello.
And are we clicking as we go on?
So thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you. We love talking about our program, and always welcome the opportunity to talk about what we're doing and how our children are succeeding. So thank you so much. We do follow the district mission of making sure that we educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. So our presentation, I hope, will show you how we're meeting the goals of that mission.
Research on programs such as ours is clear. Dr. James Heckman from the University of Chicago had done some research years ago about investing in Head Start. Invest a dollar in Head Start and receive a return on that investment of $11 to $16. James Heckman indicates that no other investment, public or private, predictably provides such a high return. When I looked at current research on Dr. Heckman, he is still talking of the positive effects of investing in preschool, particularly of children that are disadvantaged. National and state research by the National Center for Early Childhood Development and Learning shows that the benefit to children, regardless of family income, make progress during the pre-kindergarten year in language, literacy, and numeracy, and teachers report that there are improved social skills.
And national research also shows that low-income children that have high-quality preschool experiences during their school years have higher scores in reading and math at the three levels, ages 8, 12, and 15. We have reduced special education placements, reduced occurrences of grade retentions, and higher rates of high school graduation. That's from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website. The Reynolds and Perry Preschool Project was a research project done many, many years ago. It's still valid today. It shows that children with high-quality preschool experiences have lower rates of juvenile arrests, reduced arrests for violent crimes, and increased employment rates and higher We've known that every dollar invested in a quality 4K program, the school district could see a $0.68 savings in education.
We wanted to show you some of our own local research. So we gathered, aggregated the data from our first trimester this year of the Head Start four-year-old children. We looked at the four-year-old children that have one-year preschool experience compared to those that are returning as a second year of preschool. The columns represent the percentage of children who have met or exceeded their goal of being kindergarten-ready in these four areas of development: social, emotional, language, literacy, and mathematics. The blue column represents those children that have had one year of Head Start, and the orange column, those children that have had two years of Head Start.
Sally, when was that testing done?
The first trimester ended end of November this year, 2016.
Okay, so you test them right after the first trimester?
Correct.
And then when do you test them after every trimester?
March 3rd ends second trimester, and then again at the very end of the school year. So by June, we have three trimesters of data.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have students who do Head Start for just one year?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So that's what the blue is actually reflecting, so this is...
Correct. They're all four, because we do have three-year-olds in Head Start, but this is all of the four-year-olds. And we compare those four-year-olds who have one year, so first-year experience this year in Head Start, and those that returned a second year to Head Start.
Okay, thank you.
So for our four-year-old kindergarten program, in the state of Wisconsin, there are three models. There's a Model 1, which is we use district employees in district buildings. A Model 2 would be district employees in a community site, and then a Model 3 is community employees in a community site. 4K began in the Green Bay School District in the fall of 2008. At that time, we had 12 Model 1 sites, one Model 2 site, and six Model 3 sites, for a total of 805 students. This year, we have 16 Model 1 sites, nine Model 3 sites, and we no longer have a Model 2 site, for a total of 1,102 students. We also have some collaborative classrooms. We have three classrooms where we collaborate with Head Start, and two early childhood special education collaborative classrooms.
Head Start is a federal program for preschool-aged children from low-income families that began in 1965 as part of the War on Poverty program. There are Head Start programs in almost every county throughout the country. Here in Wisconsin, we have 37 Head Start programs, serving 14,337 children. Our Green Bay Head Start program has been part of the school district for 49 years. We're currently enrolling 336 children aged 3 to 5 in four locations in the district.
So our 4K locations, these, the first box, are all of our school-based locations. Those are aligned with our homeschool areas. The Aldo area also covers part of Howe. Aldo does not have its own placement area, so Howe School, we split into two areas. Part is Aldo and part is the YWCA. Beaumont covers students from Beaumont and Tink. Frabel covers students from Martin McCallum Baird, both English and bilingual. The Early Learning Center has students from Sullivan, Dan's, and Eisenhower bilingual, and then Sullivan and Dan's English students. The next box talks about our Model 3 sites. Four of the, we have six Encompass sites. Four of those Encompass sites are choice only, which means I don't place students there. They bring students to us. So they run our program for us, but they might be students that are from other districts that are in their childcare centers, and they bring them to us. Two of the Encompass programs I do place at, so the Cornerstone Site covers students from Fort Howard and Jefferson. Rosebush takes care of children from Nicolay. Peace Nursery Center takes care of children from Wilder and Eisenhower English. And then the YWCA does the other half of the Howe area. The third box is the Oak Learning Center. That's our customized program out at the Wildlife Sanctuary. Very popular program, again, a choice program. So we can take 40 students there. It's always a very popular program, and we usually have a waiting list going into the summer. Sometimes we're able to go through that waiting list and place all of the students that want to go there, but not always. The nice thing about that program is children get to learn in and through nature. So it's a little bit different. They do cover all the curriculum that we cover in our 4K programs, but they do it in a different way. And then the last is just what our collaborations look like. We have a couple at Head Start, at Keller, and then our, and I think we have one at the HSLC.
In Head Start, we have four locations. One is at the Howe Resource, Howe Neighborhood Resource Center. We have four classrooms at Helen Keller Elementary School. One is a straight Head Start class, one is a collaborative early childhood special at Head Start classroom. One is collaborative with 4K English, and one is collaborative with 4K Spanish. Then we have one classroom at Southwest High School, and six classrooms at the Head Start Learning Center, which is the school by St. Peter and Paul that we rent. We have four Head Start-only classrooms, one collaborative Spanish with 4K, and one collaborative early childhood.
And so this is what our programming looks like. For 4K, like I said, we have Model Ones and Model Threes. We have 437 program hours. Those are half-day, most of them are double sessions, so 20 students in the morning and 20 students in the afternoon. We also have 87 and a half hours of parent involvement yearly. That's one of the requirements from DPI. Eligibility is age four by September 1st. It's available to all four-year-olds in the district. Our curriculum is creative curriculum, and we use Teaching Strategies Gold for our assessment, and we do align with Wisconsin Model Early Learning standards.
And we're very similar in Head Start. We're center-based only. We provide currently 448 program hours, same as 4K half-day double session, Monday through Thursday. We offer numerous monthly parent involvement opportunities. Eligibility of our children is three or four by September 1st. The program is available to low-income families living in the Green Bay School District area. We are allowed to enroll 10% over income once we've exhausted all of our lower-income children. We follow same curriculum and assessment as 4K, and we also align with the Wisconsin Model Early Learning standards, as well as the Head Start Early Learning Outcomes Framework. In coming fall of '17, we will be, 25% of our enrollment will now go to the full-day programming as a result of the grant that we received, and that will be 1,020 hours.
Why don't we stand that slide for a minute? I have a couple of questions for Mary and Sally. Number one, the, on the 4K, the 87 and a half parent involvement hours, is that mandatory? What if parents are working two jobs and they don't have the time, or they don't want to do it? How do you, how do you manage that?
We have to offer it to them. They don't have to attend. So what we, and we try to do things in the evenings, so most of the things, we have another slide coming up, we talk about some of those things. We try to do them in the evenings. Sometimes we'll offer things because, of course, we have parents who work nights who wouldn't be able to come. So we do a combination of both, and we, and it's not all the same in every school. We leave it up to the schools. So sometimes the teachers will offer like a math day, or in my school, we have a math game day, where our parents are invited to come and play math games with their children during the day. So there's a variety of things that we do to involve them. We can offer parenting classes. It doesn't all have to be with their children. It can be things that benefit their children. So we try to come up with a wide variety of things that they can do. Things that are done through PTOs in elementary schools that are offered to our 4K students also count as those parent involvement hours.
Now, the, for the Head Start for low-income families, is that based on the federal poverty for free and reduced?
Correct.
Is that the standard you use?
It is.
Now, if, if a parent's child qualifies for that program, could they still say, "No, I'd rather be in 4K than Head Start"? Is that a choice parents can make?
Absolutely. Of course, for a three-year-old, low income, the only option is Head Start, but for a four-year-old, absolutely, they have a choice of which program. And in fact, the returning three-year-old children, we meet with them each spring before the program year ends and talk about the two options.
How do new parents with a four-year-old, the first child, not really knowing much about the school system or how things work, how do they find out about the two programs and which one is best for their child?
Well, we're on the district website. We've developed, along with Lori and her office, recruitment materials that get sent home with all students in the district. We have posters that we put throughout the community. We do mailings to our community partners, informing them that we're currently enrolling for both Head Start and 4K. I know that some of our best resource is just word of mouth. You know, our own families and parents spreading the good word. We talk about it in our newsletter, communications that go home with families.
And we get a lot of phone calls. I answer, this is the time of the year I spend most of my day on the phone. People are calling and they're asking questions and wanting to know where they can send their children, and they are first-time families, so they're nervous and they don't know where they should go, or if they should even send them, what if they have a summer birthday? So I love calls like that, because it gives me an opportunity to talk about 4K and really give them their options.
And we talk about that we follow the same curriculum, the same assessment that the children, regardless of which program, get the same learning opportunities. And then, of course, we have the income requirement, so that makes a difference for a lot of families. You know, the years ago, before 4K, we had such a large waitlist of four-year-olds. We never would hold a four-year-old on a waitlist, waiting for a Head Start opening anymore. We just encourage them to go right to 4K when we're full.
Good, thank you.
And maybe you said already, I'm sorry if I missed it. The differentiation between the models, you've got Model 1, Model 2, and Model 3, would you cover that place?
Sure. So Model 1 is district teachers in district buildings. A Model 2 are district teachers in a community-based building. And Model 3s are community teachers, so like head, daycare teachers, but they all have to have the same requirements as our teachers. They have to be four-year-degree teachers in a community site.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Brenda?
How often do we use that 10% over income allowance?
We have, in my 20 years here, we've never reached the 10%.
Oh, so it's not 10% over the income?
We're allowed.
It's 10% of the number of students can be...
Correct. Of our 336, we're allowed that 33 children could be over the income requirement.
So do we usually have, that's my question, do we usually have 33 children in our program?
No.
Or is it mostly low-income?
Generally about 3% to 4%, and those are the children that are selected through the Special Education Department to be in our collaborative settings.
So our enrollment, as I said earlier, is 1,102 in January. 211 are Spanish bilingual children, and 112 are identified with disabilities.
And of our 336, three, or 186 are three-year-old children, 30 of which are in our Spanish bilingual classroom. 154-year-old children, and 36 are Spanish bilingual. And we currently have 63... we currently have sixty-three children identified with disabilities.
Do we know how many four-year-olds that live in our school district participate in either program? And I guess my question is, how many don't?
Right.
Right.
Can I know what percentage?
Yeah.
Well, I was on Outcome Team One for Chief Brown County, and what they do, it's not completely accurate, because they compare the number of students in 4K programs with the number of kindergarten students, you know, kids move and things like that, so they said eighty percent. I thought that was high, I wasn't sure we were getting that high of a percentage. It's difficult because we don't know what number of children are out there. Now, for next year, I'm going to try to use the census to try to reach some of those families again, so we can increase our enrollment, but it's hard to know, that's really the only way we can do it, is compare the 4K numbers to 5K, but...
But even comparing four and five K with the mobility in our school district, that's not always accurate either.
Right. I was, I thought, I was guessing more like seventy percent, but the figure they came up with through the DPI numbers was eighty percent.
We can gather that information and share with board.
Yeah, I think that's...
We'll see if we can find that.
At least an estimate, because we can compare the work.
So we serve the family, this is what we were talking about with parent involvement and engagement, so some of these things are available to Head Start families, some are available only to 4K. So we do things like positive parenting cafes. Those are sometimes put on by Encompass and some of the other daycare centers and sites in collaboration with us, so we offer it to all of our parents. Head Start does book clubs and scrapbooking classes, they have a men and kids supper, nutrition classes, and they have policy council. Pyramid Model, we've done, we both use Pyramid Model, which is a positive behavior program, and we have made presentations to parents about that. We hold literacy nights, math and game nights, science nights, we've had cultural nights, and those are just a few of the ideas that we come up with. Like I said, we have, each school can do their own ideas of what they wanted to do for family involvement, but this is a good sampling.
And some additional statistics with Head Start, the children receive free medical and dental care, in-home support, and have healthy meals and snacks at school every day, and all of that is a requirement of Head Start. Of the three hundred and fifty-seven children, or families, that we've enrolled this year, and I say three fifty-seven even though our enrollment is three thirty-six because of the families that have come and gone through our program, there are some statistics about the single-parent families and those that are employed, two-parent families and those that are employed. Seven percent of our families have experienced homelessness this year, twelve percent of those have acquired housing. Forty-nine percent of our families have received at least one referral or family service by our home visitors. The main areas of need have been in housing, food resource, medical referrals, and parenting education. Seventy-eight percent of our families use Oral Health Partnership as their primary dental facility, and one hundred percent of our children have completed their hearing and vision screenings, and we do those within our own program with our school nurse. And 4K students have also received vision and hearing screenings, and some of the schools have received Oral Health Partnership.
So this is a breakdown by race. Fifty percent of our students are Caucasian, seven percent Black or African-American, twenty-eight percent Hispanic, seven percent Asian, and eight percent American Indian, Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. And we do provide bilingual family support, translate all materials to English, from English to Spanish, we also do translate now into Somali and Mung.
And same slide, only Head Start enrollment by race, we're about even with Caucasian, quite a bit higher in the Black or African-American, a little bit lower with Hispanic, about equal with Asian, and equal with the American Indian, Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander, and we too do the translation.
So this is a look at our classroom staff. It consists of Model, 4K Model One teachers, 4K Model Three teachers, Head Start teachers, we have paraprofessionals in every classroom, and one hundred percent of our classroom teachers are state-certified.
Both of our programs offer transportation, families or children are eligible for busing if they live point five miles or further away from their home school. In addition, Head Start regulates that each bus must have an adult monitor riding along, and each child must wear a five-point harness.
Sally, is that the requirement for the harness, is that relatively new?
It's about eight years old. It has. The harness itself has changed. The basic harness started about eight years ago, and it's gone to the five-point harness about three years ago.
Does our Head Start funding cover that, or do we have to cover that?
We, they do not give us additional funding for the harnesses, and they're approximately a hundred dollars per harness, and they have a life of three years, and they need to be disposed of.
So we provide the harnesses, not the bus companies?
Correct, we provide the harnesses.
Excuse me, by we, that's Head Start and not the district.
It's Head Start and not the district, correct. So as we talked earlier, we have community partnerships throughout the community of Green Bay. Quite a few of our staff from both 4K and Head Start take a very active role in community planning to encourage cooperation and information sharing, to improve the service delivery for both of our programs. We currently have collaborative relationships with services such as Oral Health Partnership, United Way, Brown County Health and Human Service Departments, NWTC, the Lions Club, Brown County Library, Healthy Families, and the UW Extension. We perform outreach to encourage community residents to volunteer for our program, and in Head Start, we have a Health and Education Services Advisory Committee that meets twice a year, and it's made up of community partners that guide us on those regulations around education and health.
So, this is for both Head Start and 4K. Our curriculum is creative curriculum, which is a play-based curriculum. By play-based, I mean children are using their hands, they're involved, it's experiential. So, when people hear play-based, they think they're just playing all day long, and I assure you that they are playing, but they're not just playing, they're learning while they're playing. So, and that's really one of our philosophies, is we do believe that we need to have children active in their environment. If you would come to any one of our classrooms, you would see lots of excitement, lots of noise, lots of children exploring and trying new things, and that's exactly what you should be seeing, so I do invite you to come to any one of our programs to see that. We do cover all of our domain areas, so we do talk mostly about social and emotional because for us, that's the most important area. If we can't get children to control their behaviors and control their emotions, it's very difficult to get them to learn. But once we do have that under control, we are able to do their physical development, their language development, math skills, science, literacy, social studies, and the arts.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure, go ahead.
A couple of your last comments, perhaps you're in a position to answer this, is this much different, that approach than Montessori? I always, you've always bring out the term Montessori, like it's the answer to preschool, and what I'm hearing, it sounds somewhat similar to what you're doing.
My impression, and I don't, I don't know for sure about Montessori, because I do think that each Montessori program is run a little bit differently. It seems a little bit more structured, and there's only maybe one way to do things, that's the experience of when I toured a Montessori school, that's what it looked like. For us, we're trying to help children learn how to solve problems on their own, so that's where the hands-on comes in, because we might give them, you know, a lump of Play-Doh and just let them experience whatever they're going to experience with it. And we also talk to them to find out, what are you building with that, and give them different ideas of what could you do instead, or if they're making something, well, what if you tried this? So, you know, I don't know exactly what Montessori is, but I can tell you what we do.
And I do not either know a lot about the Montessori. I've worked in childcare, and I've worked in Head Start most of my career, I know there are just quality preschool programs everywhere, there's quality childcare, and I think that our programs here in Green Bay are very high-quality, and a lot depends on the sort of, you know, the staff that are qualified, and certainly the curriculum that is introduced and used throughout the daily routine.
And I would say that some of the constructivist principles that are part of the Montessori programming, and student self-advocacy, those are elements that are interwoven into our curriculum and our programming as well. So there are certain parallels with Montessori, but I would share that, again, the very structured approach of Montessori, that is kind of a one, it can be kind of a one-size-fits-all to some extent, even though there's some differentiation within it, I think that the programming we offer is a little broader, but it still speaks to the need to make sure that students have choice in their learning, and that they have constructivist opportunities through play-based learning.
The last slide is some quotes from our parents from last year's satisfaction survey that we send out to families every year, just asking about their experiences in Head Start. And that concludes our presentation.
Board question, Chris.
Well, thank you very much, I certainly believe in what you're doing. One question, I don't think you mentioned, if you did, I missed it. Out of curiosity, how is the program going at Southwest? I know we had a lot of great hope for that, helping kids, both the younger children and the high school students.
It's a wonderful collaborative relationship that we have with the preschool children and the high school students. When we first started there, and I'm thinking it was approximately about fifteen years ago at Southwest, there was a program offered at Southwest through NWTC where high school students could get their early childhood growth and development, one and two, and there was, the classroom was built so that there were observation windows, and we were right next door to the high school class, they could use our classroom as a lab, but that is no longer offered at Southwest. So, but the teacher there, Jolie Zarin, creates quite a bit of collaborative programs and projects with the high school students, the bilingual students, the English department, they've played T-ball with the baseball team. They've had a lot of fun together, and they've done a lot of great projects. It's worked very well for us. I hope it does for the high school as well.
My wife has, my wife has subbed in that program, she really likes working with, because the, the kids at Southwest are really good, and I think it's a great interaction between the little ones and the bigger kids.
I guess that begs the question, if it's that good at Southwest, would it be that good at our other three high schools? And you have to answer that with just a statement.
Well, and I currently have the six classrooms at the Head Start Learning Center on first floor, John Dewey is on third floor, and we have utilized the students, we've done projects together, right to their students coming and collecting our garbage every day over their lunch break, because our morning garbage has to be removed because of the meal service and the waste, we're not allowed to carry it or have it in the rooms throughout the day. So, they've done projects with us, they've built things with the kids, they've read with the children, so we've had a good relationship with them as well.
I think we can, you know, explore opportunities for other additional expansion as well. I too want to thank Sally and Mary for all their work. If you look at the materials, really, it's a reflection of many of the best things that we do as a district, but in the microcosm of working with our youngest learners, you know, there's community outreach, there's deep focus on curriculum, there's thinking about the whole child and the needs of the students, as well as the diversity that our students are coming with, and I think that their creativity and the way that they address those needs is really emblematic of how we hope to serve all of our students. So really, again, I feel like it gives our first learners an opportunity to receive a really positive perspective of Green Bay Public Schools.
Michelle?
I'm sorry, and thank you for your presentation, I know so much good work is being done. Can you speak a little bit more, have we ever collected longitudinal data on our little ones, or do you see that, Mary, was that ever part of the Outcome Team One conversation, to see students who are in multi-years of early childhood programs, and where they move through?
We did talk a little bit about that, but I think the outcome, the one I was on ended before we got that far.
Okay, all right.
And I am not familiar with any that has been done. The report cards now for the four-year-old students are entered in the Infinite Campus system, and then that collects data on students throughout their high school career, so it's, at least we have the data in that system and...
Right, and perhaps that would be something, this is our ninth year, so there should be, we should be able to find it.
Because the research is very strong, and there was just a recent piece that came out that I read as well, that it was actually, I think, on high school students who had had, and it was, and it mattered, one year or two years in their preschool programs in terms of how well they were doing at high school, which affirms your research that you shared as well. So, I think we need to look deeper and see what we see with that, and I will do that.
Brenda?
I also have a question on Slide Five, which is the data graph. Is that, is that the, is this the first year we've collected this?
No, we've collected this data every year.
Okay, so, does the, and this is just at first trimester, correct?
Correct.
So, you're, you expect the bars to approach closer to a hundred percent by the end of the year?
Correct.
And is this, I'm not going to describe it well, but there's tests that you give where the difficulty of the test increases, and so I'm assuming that what you're measuring proficiency on this graph is proficiency at the first trimester. You're not measuring, and then you're not doing an end-of-the-year test at the first trimester, or, correct?
Correct. Well, this data is from the Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment that we both use, and that assessment is set up on a developmental continuum for children at birth through kindergarten. So, our three-year-old children have a sets, they fall into their color band, the expectation is that they fall within a certain score by the time they leave their first year in Head Start, and then the same with the four-year-olds. You start at a certain spot in that color band on the continuum, if they're three, or they're four, or they're five. And the goal is that our children would receive, would meet or exceed the expectation within their color band or age by the time they leave Head Start.
Okay, I think I get that.
Does that help? And then we do measure the exact same objectives all three trimesters, so by the end of the school year, we have data on how children did from first to second to third trimester in not only these four areas, but additional domain areas as well.
So there's, and it's the same assessment each trimester?
Correct.
So there is room for improvement on this, as opposed to if it were moving up in difficulty, you'd probably get similar results at the end of the year? But that's not the case in what, with what you're doing? I mean, how you're assessing?
An example would be if the child, and these were four-year-olds, so the expectation is that they're counting to, say, twenty. So at the start, you know, we first assess where the children are counting to at first trimester.
Right.
So they might only be counting to ten. The expectation by the end of the school year is twenty.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Yeah, that answers my question, yes, thank you.
Should just put it in simpler terms to start with.
Other people make it even more complicated, but I don't know that vocabulary, so...
Anything else on the board? Well, thank you, Mary and Sally.
Thank you.
I know our Head Start and 4K programs, along with our 5K, are so critical for when our students might enter first grade, that if we're going to narrow and get rid of the achievement gap, we have later on, this early start is so critical for those kids. I would hope, and I think probably your goal, I would hope that our goal would be that a hundred percent of our fourth graders, our four-year-olds, get into this program. I know how difficult that is, but I guess I would urge you to keep working for that because we can't leave any kids behind.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next is our Inter-City Student Council Report, I'll turn that over to Grace.
Okay, so, we have some awesome things going on in our schools, and so, I'll just get started right away with John Dewey. So, the seniors are hard at work on their capstone projects for graduation. So, the seniors are hard at work on their capstone projects for graduation. And there was, they had a prom, and it went very well. The theme was Yule Ball, just like in the Harry Potter movies. I don't know if you guys have seen those, but that's what the theme is in there, and that was actually one student's capstone project. So, that, I'm not really sure how it relates, but I just know that that was one student's capstone project. The student, they also will be starting up their student council soon, which is their first student council, and, which is extremely exciting for representation at the school.
And then for West, Sunday night was held on February eleventh, and it's to raise awareness for the homelessness. And then, the West girls won forty-six to forty-two against East, but the boys lost, unfortunately. And for the third consecutive years, West won the wing eating contest against East, and West raised approximately seven thousand dollars overall by donations by businesses. And then, on February seventeenth was the Redout Game, and on, it is to donate to the American Heart Association. And then, on February eighteenth was Snowball, and it went well. And then, the women's soccer team began to have open gym and captains practice, and then, the spring play that was chosen is nine to five. And then, as for East, boys won against West at Sunday night, and girl's soccer began to have open gym starting on the nineteenth, as well as softball on the twentieth. And two students will be going to DECA State. Show choir won grand champion at Berlin. Intramural basketball has now come to an end, and then mock child team is moving on to the state semifinals, and collect, they collect, and they collected thirty-five pints of blood at the blood drive. And then, their spring play additions are today and tomorrow, and the play is the awesome eighties prom.
So for Southwest, they had their annual Doodbe Nice Week, as Dr. Langenfeld talked about her good news. The girls' ice bears hockey team is moving on to regional semifinals, and that's a district-wide club, so it's not just Southwest, but I just put it in for Southwest. But, so there's players from every school, I believe, so they'll be going on to the regional semifinals. Zach Nelson has qualified for state wrestling. This is his second year to qualify. The swim team placed thirteenth at their state meet. They had their Project S Two Point O dance, which is really popular and more of a casual dance right after a basketball game. And they had their Beauty and the Beast musical, which went extremely well. And their Metro, and their Metro Math team has a meet tonight. And then, for Preble, they had a senior night for girls last Thursday, although, and there's only one senior on the girls' basketball team, so it was kind of all about her that night, so that was really cool for her. And senior night for boys' basketball is this upcoming Friday. And DECA State is in two weeks, and we'll have twenty-five people competing, which is one of our largest groups we've ever brought to state, which is really awesome. We had our snowball dance, which went pretty well. We're now getting ready for prom, which is upcoming April first, so not too far away. Our wrestling is all done. No one advanced on to state, but they still all did really well. Spring sports are starting their open gyms, and they're getting ready for child's and practices. Our spring play is underway and beginning, and it is the crucible this year. And lastly, we had our talent show, and it was a huge success. That's all.
All right, thanks, Grace. Next is our legislative liaison report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thank you, Brenda. Before we get into the state budget, and staff joined us at the table, because there's a lot of critical things in the governor's budget for public education, I just wanted to talk briefly on the WASB Delegate Assembly at the convention, and I'd like to thank Chris Wagner for once again being our delegate and speaking on behalf of a number of the resolutions. And Chris, speak up. I'm not going to go through all of them, because these are on the WASP website, if you want to look at all of them. I'm just going to touch on a couple of them. The two resolutions that were drafted by, presented by our school district passed overwhelmingly. Chris spoke on behalf of both of them. One of the resolutions would increase the reimbursement for summer school students. It is currently, students count forty percent. If you were to bring that up, you could do a full one-hundred percent count. Chris spoke on behalf of that. That passed overwhelmingly. And the second one of our resolutions that passed was WASP supports creating a state categorical aid targeted to assist districts with the cost of transporting mobile or transient students to the school in which they originally enrolled, when, within a given year, such students move to another school within the district. That also passed. And then, Chris introduced a resolution that greatly strengthened another resolution that obviously affects our district, and I'll, the resolution says, WASP supports legislation to require the Department of Public Instruction each year to identify in dollar terms a per pupil revenue limit that approximates ninety-five percent of the statewide average per pupil revenue limit, and to allow any district with a per pupil revenue limit that falls below the dollar amount identified by the DPI to increase its revenue limit each year by up to a hundred dollars per pupil more than the dollar amount of the per pupil adjustment generally allowed by law, without the need for referendum approval up to the dollar amount identified by the DPI. Chris introduced an amendment that increased the hundred dollars per pupil to four hundred dollars per pupil. That amendment passed overwhelmingly, and then the resolution as amendment also passed. So, thank you, Chris. Anything you would like to add?
No, no, thank you. I thank the colleagues on the board for allowing me the opportunity to be the representative. Obviously, you go there and you have work done by administrative staff here to back up what you're saying, so it's not done solely by one person. Mr. Plucka's always at the, has always been at the front table for the board, and it's always been reassuring to make comments, and I can see Mr. Plucka nodding his head. Usually it's up and down.
Yeah, usually.
It's worked well, but thank you for the compliments.
And, and just for the public viewpoint, these resolutions that are passed instruct our WASB lobbyists. So when they go to the Capitol, this is the direction of the entire organization. So, these resolutions really are critical, and Dan Rossmiller and Chris Kulo, our lobbyists, do use these and said, this is, this is the official voice of the four hundred and twenty-two school, public school districts in Wisconsin. So that, it is, it's important work.
If I could just make a comment, having attended this opportunity as the group, all the board members talk about the resolutions. What I saw this year, and I don't know if others saw it as well, such a unified voice. In the past, sometimes it was, it was broader thinking, and there were rural issues and urban issues, but this time it felt really like cohesive, very forward-thinking, pro, you know, in favor of resources and opportunities to ensure that every child across the state of Wisconsin attending public education has wonderful opportunities. So I thank you for, for your work on that as well.
All right, second item is the state budget. We're gonna have staff, I'll give a brief overview of the budget and where it is right now, and then you have a number of the topics that we're gonna talk about on your screen there, and we'll go kind of one by one, and then there's a couple that aren't there, but I have some handouts for the board that, ones that arose later. And again, I would like to thank Dan Rossmiller and Chris Kulo, that they blogged out sometime a couple, a day after the governor's budget, just giving every board member in the state the information on different facets of the budget. So, you will see some of those in there, and on a lot of those, there are links to, for further information, if you want to go into that. But, just to give you some background, the governor released his budget on February eighth. The budget now sits with the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, which takes about a month to prepare budget papers, which in a sense is costing out all the provisions in the budget, and identifying those which are fiscal items and which are policy items. And after, so that takes about a month, and then the fifteen-member Joint Finance Committee, which consists of senators and representatives from both parties, they hold a series of hearings around the state in March and April, and it may, it may go into May. Usually, there are four hearings around the state. Two years ago, the closest hearing was at Brilliant High School, and some of us, and we had some parents go down and testify. And then the two years previous to that, the hearing was at Lambo Field. The dates, or the places haven't been selected yet, but I assume there'll be one in northeastern Wisconsin, and I think some of us will want to show up there. After the Joint Finance Committee hearings, the budget goes to both the Senate and the Assembly. Majority Party, which is the Republicans, develop their budget in caucus, and then the minority party submits amendments. And then, in June or July, the Assembly and Senate vote on the budget, and if there is a difference in the two budgets, a conference committee is formed of senators and Assembly representatives. And then, once the conference committee comes up with a budget, that has to be voted up or down in both the Senate and the Assembly, cannot be amended. And then it goes to the governor for his signature. And any possible vetoes, or if someone wanted to challenge the budget, it would take a two-thirds vote to override the governor. So, that's the status of the budget, and now Andy, would you come up? And Jean, I think Jean Marsh will join us, there's a topic.
And Melissa.
And then Melissa Thiel-Coller will also be addressing, and Kim Powell. So, if you go to your screen, the first sign that we're gonna be talking about is the one marked Governor Budget Pupil Aid. I'll give a couple of highlights in that, and then Andy will talk a little bit more. Governor is proposing to increase each school district's allotment of the aid by an additional two hundred dollars in two thousand seventeen eighteen, and an additional two hundred and four dollars in eighteen nineteen, in the second year of the budget. Now, this is being done differently than in the past. This is, really comes through as a categorical aid, rather than an increase in the revenue limit. I guess I kind of liken it to giving your employees a stipend or a bonus and not increasing their base pay. Obviously, an increase in the base pay is far preferable, because that raises your level. A one-time stipend or bonus is just at a one-time, and your base remains the same. So that's what, that's what it is there. The, approximately the same amount of money goes to voucher students. They would get an additional two hundred and seventeen dollars in each year of the budget. Currently, K-aid vouchers, students get seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars from our budget, and the secondary students get seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Now, there was, and I guess, on the positive side of the voucher issue, there had been some speculation that the governor would eliminate for the statewide program the hundred and eighty-five percent level, the income level for students to qualify. For the voucher program, it's at a hundred and eighty-five percent of the poverty level. He did not eliminate that, and there was also some speculation that he would eliminate the percentage limits. This year, it's at two percent, and it's scheduled to go up one percentage point a year till it gets to ten percent, and then it'd be eliminated totally. He did not touch that. There was one kind of unusual provision that I noticed in an article in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. It said, "Walker's Full Budget Proposal Added Another Important Layer of Spending Specificity." Districts that received the aid boost would have to direct all the per pupil money, quote, "to individual school buildings," unquote. That means that centrally funded items such as special education, or district transportation, or even guidance counselors could be shortchanged. There was a quote from Luther Olson, who's chair of the Senate Education Committee, said he finds some problems with that logic. Said he understood the urge to make sure new funding goes to children and not to centralize bureaucracies, but the restrictions might prevent districts from making necessary investments in new technology equipment or centralized purchases for middle school textbooks. He said, "I think it flies in the face of local control." So that is also in the budget. Andy, take it away.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, and I think as you've done as well, Mr. Plucka, the district has been spending time and trying to interpret exactly, exactly what this means for us. Specific, the categorical aid, or what we've been referring to as a stipend. So through the last prior, prior biennial budget, last year it was a hundred and fifty dollars a student. This year it's two hundred and fifty dollars per student. So that translates to about five point five million dollars. So for the next biennial period, they're talking about extending that by two hundred dollars, extending it by two hundred dollars next year, and then two hundred and four for the following year. So next year, essentially, it would be four point four million dollars of a categorical aid that we'd be receiving from the state. So, they have, through the language that I've interpreted, or that many of us have, it's not an extension of the revenue limit. It is truly a stipend that we're talking about. As indicated, it translates to four point four million dollars in addition to the five point five million that we've received for the current year, that we will be receiving. That is a large amount. It's, it will be funded by the state. I know that there's some provisions, as it talks about the Act Ten tools, that there are some districts that are contemplating whether or not that will affect them, as those are things that would not be affecting us, which is the contribution towards the health insurance at twelve percent. As we've looked at our deficit, our projected deficit, the true deficit for next year at eighteen million dollars, this would lessen that deficit. However, again, what we've been communicating out as a part of the referendum informational sessions is that over the last two years, we've had twenty-one million dollars of deferred, or reduced, or eliminated expenses. So as I look at this, where it does provide some relief towards the deficit, these are toward, these would be put towards items excluding where I had not heard that information yet in regards to being put towards the schools. That was new to me. But this would, this would be put towards items that we've been deferring the last couple of years.
Michelle?
Just to add, I want to be sure if I understand this accurately, though, that regardless, they're calling it a categorical aid, but it goes to everyone the same. So, it doesn't matter if there's poverty, it doesn't matter. So, a district with significantly more resource gets the same as a child in another district with less resource. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. In fact, I just had a conversation earlier today with a colleague. So regardless of the current revenue limit of the district, high or low, higher, low property value, free and reduced status with the mill, it's all indifferent. If they qualify for this two hundred dollars, it would be blanket wherever they qualify.
Yeah, I mean, that's a concern, that wealthy suburban districts get wealthy. Yeah, I mean, that's a concern, that wealthy suburban districts get wealthier. Tony Evers in the DPI budget had factored in poverty into the, into state aid. He had a bump-up factor for school districts. And it's not just urban school districts, a lot of rural districts have high poverty. There was a bump-up in his proposal. That is not in the governor's proposal.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Any board questions on that? One of the concerns is, is that three of the key legislative leaders, John Nygren, who's co-chair of the Joint Finance Committee, Robin Voss, who is Speaker of the Assembly, and Scott Fitzgerald, who is the Senate Majority Leader, have all said, basically, that's too much money. So, that faces a tough fight. And although when you have the three key Republican legislators saying that, we don't think they're, we don't think they're going to get that much money. So, kind of stating, Chris.
May I ask a technical question? They say it was too much money, or that the money's not, where's the money going to come from?
Well, I think, what was the quote that I?
You can afford it.
Well, I mean, the, the elephant in the room is a billion-dollar deficit in the transportation fund. And there's a lot of disagreement over what roads will be repaired, and where the money, and where the money is going to come from. So, yeah. Legislative leaders have expressed skepticism about whether the state can afford an aid increase for schools as big as what the governor has proposed. So, that's, that will be a key thing as we move through the joint finance hearings and the debate in the two houses. Chris.
My opinion, the governor's running for reelection. He can say all these things, and then try to sell it that I was a champion for education, knowing full well the money's not there, but he'll put the blame over on the legislative branch. That's my opinion of how he's playing it out.
So, we'll see. Any other thoughts or questions on the aid? The second one that Andy will also address is in, on your screen under, oh, the second one, Governor Budget Energy. The governor has proposed eliminating the revenue limit exemption for energy efficiency project. He argues it is necessary to mitigate property tax increases. As property tax increase, property tax levies associated with exemption grew 115% in the last three years. WSB is opposing eliminating that, and is lobbying the legislature to remove that from the budget. Andy?
Yeah. So, very few times do districts have the ability to increase revenues primarily through a referendum. The energy efficiency exemption is a state statute that has allowed the district to, the authority through the board's, board's involvement, to have an exemption to the revenue limit. So, our district has utilized it the past several years. I think we've completed some pretty substantial projects, something of, of great need has been through that process. And the actual process for the energy efficiency exemption is very rigorous. There's a fairly high, extremely high level of accountability, to the extent that the energy companies that come in to perform these services are required to, are required through a bonding or an insurance process, on, on, on the level of efficiency that they're creating through these projects. So, you know, personal opinion that I believe that this is something that, that is healthy for districts. We, we are utilizing it in the current year. I mean, it has been factored in through the levy projections, through the mill rates and whatnot that we're communicating out. I did originally have a plan to address several million dollars next year related to some of the projects that we'll be addressing through a successful referendum. But honestly, I guess time will tell. I know that there are some districts that are still looking at this as something moving forward with, but we'll have to wait and see, and, yeah.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Well.
Chris.
I'm full of opinions tonight. To me, to me, the state basically has, has thrown public education, the finances, they're out of the boat, okay? Sink or swim. And, oh my gosh, they're starting to swim. Well, let's throw them a lead weight. And that's, in my opinion, what's going on with some of this.
And the next item, which you also have on your screen, the governor's budget plan made significant changes to teacher license insurer. And rather than me try to interpret this, I'll turn it over to someone who knows far more about this issue than I do. So, Jean Marsh will talk about some of the major changes, and potentially how they may affect us.
We sent a letter to, in support to Mr. Carl Bryan from the, who's the Administrative Rules Coordinator at the DPI. We're, we are under some emergency license rules right now that allow greater flexibility to districts and greater local, local control as to licensing. And so, we are in strong support of them. One of the changes that I think is most important is the, the concern that we have when some of our teachers who are not English, English with their primary language, have difficulty in passing some of the assessments. Yet, we employ them, they're making good progress in their classes, and we now would have the ability to continue to employ them, and the district will have more control over their professional development and be able to continue to have them employed. We also have greater, will have greater flexibility with hiring people in areas that are short, such as technology, education, math, and science, and give some flexibility to us to allow credit for experience, work experience in, outside of education. And we currently have at least one teacher who we have done this under the emergency license provision this, this current year. The other is to allow short-term substitutes to be assigned from 20 to 45 days, who have a substitute permit. These are people who do not have, they have a permit license, but their major is not in education, yet they may have other experiences that allow them to do substitute teaching. So, now, we are allowed to have them work 45 consecutive days rather than 20, and that also provides us greater flexibility. So, we will, the hearings have, have been held, and we will learn, I think, shortly if we were, we're going to have these rules made permanent.
Any questions on teacher license, Ed?
What are the implications, the, the section that says that school districts would be able to compensate student teachers? Where is that going? What, what's the purpose of that?
I think that right now, we are allowed to hire a student teacher as an intern, and we have one person. We did that for the first time this year, to my knowledge. We have a student teacher who is working here as an intern, and we can have that individual teach up to 50% of the time, and work in collaboration with another teacher, the other or other district staff, the other 50%. And we are allowed to compensate that person a stipend. I'm not sure how this changes that, because we can already do that.
Yeah, that's been around forever.
I, I don't really know if that allows us more flexibility to, I mean, the person had to get a license, we had to get agreements between the college, university, and the district. I didn't think it was very onerous to do it.
Anything else on that item? Thank you, Jean. The next item is, the governor's budget includes about $6.5 million and several other provisions to assist school districts in providing mental health services in schools. Who, Kim, are you taking that one?
Yeah. I mean, we've talked about this before. Obviously, we would love to see some opportunity to receive resources to help with those. But I think we always have to be careful about where those resources can be used, and making sure that we have them being used in the right places, and at the right time, and with the right students and families. So, you know, I don't, we wouldn't be opposed, but I think it'll be interesting to see what comes as pieces that are tied to that, or what other things come along with it. So, but on our end, that'd be great.
Okay. Chris?
I, actually, I read it, of course, I don't have everything in front of me. Was that also, was it talking just about staff development, or was it also talking about hiring additional personnel, specialized personnel?
From what I read, it was talking about hiring specialized personnel, as well as staff development. I think the worry that we have, that I see in there, which is the same worry we had before, was the screening and the intervention piece. So, as I've mentioned before, when you start to screen, what tool are you using? Are we screening all students? So, if it's for personnel, and it's for professional learning, we certainly can find ways for that. It's the other piece that concerns us.
Well, I, I appreciate that concern. I would add to that, and it sort of goes a little bit to the paid, paid teachers, student teachers. I think we talked before about, we don't have solid schedules, per se, to follow the way we used to. We have to go on the open market, find people, and pay whatever the market will bear. Well, here's two areas that could really open that up, even more than what we have right now. The state does not have enough, our state does not have enough mental health providers, and that's pretty clear out there. So, now, if we're required to provide these services with these personnel, so we're going to outbid a mental health hospital, find somebody. I, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me whatsoever, the logic of, of that, putting that burden on, on us right now.
Yeah, I think, I'd also mention social workers, in addition to the mental health provider. So, there's an opportunity to provide more social work services, that would be great. But sometimes, we already have a difficult time finding social workers. So, I think how it all works together, I think, you know, I'd like to see something that supports the partnership of community services and districts, where we're already kind of heading, you know, and an opportunity to find some resources there to be able to bring services in from the community. Even though we're short, we do have plenty of community members right now telling us that they would love to come in and help us in our schools. But I would agree, it's going to be difficult to find all the people to fill all of these across the state, so.
So, to me, that goes back, at least in part, the state encouraging people to go into education in these particular areas. And we haven't, I haven't seen that yet, you know, maybe they're, maybe they're doing it. Maybe that's wishful. Thank you.
All right. The next item is also on your screen. Governor Budget is providing some flexibilities to, provide flexibilities to school boards and districts by repealing or modifying certain mandates. And the first one on there is, I'm interested in, it was repeal the required minimum number of hours of instruction at particular grade levels. Current law specifies at least 437 hours of direct pupil instruction in kindergarten, at least 1,050 hours of direct pupil instruction in grades one to six, and at least 1,137 hours of direct pupil instruction in grade seven to 12. And then, there's a number of other provisions, some a little less importance. Who is?
Do we have that one, do we?
I don't think so.
No, we didn't have that one.
We didn't get that one.
That's why I copied for you, Mike.
Yeah.
Well, the flexible, oh, I'm sorry. Uh-huh, that's right. Okay, that one, here, I did, Sandy did make copies here.
I think one of the things that I read was that they were going to pilot this at CESE VI, and see what that.
Yeah.
It, it really is intended, I think, to give flexibility to schools and school districts.
Yeah.
And I think that it's, it's just, it's a, it's a new conversation. So, we haven't had a lot of conversation about it. I don't know if anyone from.
Everybody have a copy.
Teaching and learning, since we didn't have a pre-conference about it, I think that it could be something we could bring back at the next and, and provide more information about. But I had heard that they were going to run it through CESE VI as a pilot first. And that there was some criteria as to who could participate and who couldn't, based on some performance standards.
Any?
I'd love the second one.
What's that? Repeal, regarding to hold it at least, at once a month? Yeah, I probably don't have to worry about that one. We have more than one a month.
I think from a calendar perspective, I don't, I don't know, Jean, you've been in those meetings with us. I mean, we are always looking at the instructional minutes and trying to make sure that we meet the minimum. I think there are some times where it would be nice to be able to kind of decide what you, what you wanted to do as a district, as long as you know you're getting done what you need to get done. So, I'd, I'd be curious to learn more about it, and see what flexibility it gives you over planning your calendar for the year, particularly, you will use some of our, the Academy at East, which is proficiency-based. You know, if you start to move some of those opportunities, it could change the requirement on instructional time.
It could. I don't know how it's still.
Chris?
Is it in here someplace, in terms of line school districts, to start before Labor Day?
Yes, yeah, we'll be getting to that later. Actually, that isn't in the budget, but that's a separate bill, and I'll be covering that one later. And then, the other one is, the budget, I just passed out another, and the, it merges course options and youth options and restores part-time open enrollment. Melissa, are you going to take that one?
I saw this when this came out, and unfortunately, there is not specific legislative language yet with respect to how this would look. The concept seems to make sense. The, the rules with respect to youth options and course options are different, confusing for parents, confusing for school districts, confusing for school counselors who are working with kids who want to access both youth options and course options. If you recall, in the last budget, part-time open enrollment was eliminated for course options, which allows kids to take up to two classes per term in a Wisconsin public institution. So, that includes another public school district, or it would include an institution of higher education. In addition to course options, kids can take classes at higher ed through youth options. And there are a little bit of different rules that apply to course options and youth options. So, what the budget proposal is, is to merge youth options and course options, provide funding for school districts and the university system. Because if you recall, when course options was created, school districts are on the hook for the entire bill of the higher ed course. And that really hurts school districts who offer a number of CAP classes. Those are those partnerships between a school district and a UW, where parents were paying a very reduced rate of tuition. School districts were now required to pay that, and didn't have the budgets to pay that. So, the universities worked out agreements with school districts to be able to offer those classes the last two years. But I think it's been a financial hardship for the universities in offering those classes. So, part-time open enrollment would be back under this proposal. So, it'd be revising policies we've completed two years ago. But that's okay.
And then, there are, you don't have those on your screen, but they're, I'll just briefly describe them. There are two other bills affecting public education that are not part of the state budget, but obviously are critical ones. The, there is a bill, and this is being introduced by two Republicans, State Representative Jim Ott, who's from Mequon, Mequon, and State Senator Albert Darling from River Hills, who is co-chair of the Joint Finance Committee. So, two fairly, and they are introducing a bill to repeal a September 1st start date mandate. Now, the bill would allow boards to determine the start date for the fall semester, beginning in the 2018-19 school year. It would not require them to start below September 1st. But, and the WSB strongly supports this bill, and is going to be lobbying on its behalf. So, I know staff would like to comment on that bill.
Yeah. We, we would love to have local control over our start and, and times. I think, obviously, that gives us some more things to consider, because now we always just know you can't start until this day.
Right.
So, I think we'd have to have some conversation about what it means to start early year, but it would definitely give us more flexibility to be able to figure out how to fit things in. You know, we talked a little bit this year about trying to find some creative calendar options that we talked about a lot and a lot, and then when it all came down, we figured out we were trying to squeeze a pound into two-pound buckets. So, we were, or the other way around, two pounds into one pound, and we ended up back where we were. So, I think this would give us some opportunity to be a little more creative with our calendar.
Okay. And I, and I think that bill stands a good chance, because it is optional. I read an article in Journal Sentinel that Luther Olson, who's Chair of the Senate Education Committee, strongly opposes the bill, because his district includes Wisconsin Dells. But it's, it's, it's not mandatory. So, I mean, I think vacation areas have always, well, I think the Tourism Ministry led to the passage of this bill in the first place, because they're worried about losing their summer. summer help for Labor Day. So, that's, that's why that, that's why it exists.
You would think to me, in those situations, they would work with their local school districts to make an accommodation, wouldn't you?
Yeah, sure. So, and then the other bill is introduced by Dewey Strobel and Jeremy Theisfeld, and he is Chair of the Assembly Education Committee. Authorizes school boards and other governmental entities to satisfy their legal obligation to publish the proceedings of regular and special meetings by posting a copy of the proceedings in a public place and electronically placing a copy on the school district's website. And staff has estimated that that would save us $7,000 a year. Any comments by?
I, I think this is a great first step. There is a number of Class I legal notices we're required to publish in the newspaper that is quite expensive every year, and so hopefully, this at least starts the conversation as to the effectiveness of Class I legal notices.
Okay. All right, and that kind of concludes our discussion of legis, I have two other items, but staff can leave if you would like. Thank you so much for your help in explaining this, and we'll be following this over the next three or four months. I wanted to mention, if people are interested, they should contact Sandy. The WSB Day at the Capitol is March 15th at Menona Terrace and the State Capitol, and everyone should have gotten one of these in the mail. Scott Nitzel, who is Head of Department Administration, will outline the governor's budget and as it affects PK 12 education. There will be a legislative panel by four legislative leaders, Scott Fitzgerald, Jennifer Schilling, Robin Voss, and Peter Barca. There is some word that the governor may be speaking also at this session. Dan Rossmiller and Chris Kulo will provide an update on WSB lobbying priorities. And then at lunch, there is, there will be a State Superintendent Candidate Forum for the two candidates that survive tomorrow's primary. And then the afternoon is, there's a couple hours of meeting with your legislators in the Capitol, and the way they do that is that you give them, the legislators you want to meet with, and there's usually time for three or four legislators for each. And if there would be more than one person for here to go, you could, we could, because we have about eight legislators that touch our school districts. So, if you're interested in going, let Sandy know and she'll register you.
What's the deadline for registration?
Um, let me see if there is a deadline on here. Registration fee, deadline, oh, deadline Wednesday, March 8th.
All right.
So, you've got some time.
Some time, all right.
And then finally, at, at the end, I, I attached a couple things. I had asked Dan Rossmiller to prepare some information for us on operational referendums. I think as we go out and talk in the community, I think people certainly understand construction referendums. Operational referendums are a little bit newer. There is a graph on there that shows the increase over the years. And then there's also a synopsis of the referendums last year, and I'll, and I'll just briefly touch on them. In November general election, debt issuance for school construction or remodeling, 34 of 42 pass, 81 percent. To exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis, 11 of 14, or 79 percent, pass. And exceeding the revenue cap on a recurring basis, 10 of 11 pass, which is 91 percent. Last April in the spring election, for debt for construction, 26 of 37, or 70 percent, passed. Exceeding the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis, 20 of 23 questions, 87 percent, passed. And exceeding the revenue cap on a recurring basis, 9 of 11, or 82 percent, passed. And I think this shows that a number of years ago, when, first of all, the governor and legislature made some drastic cuts in, in school aid and then held that aid flat over a number of years, a number of them said, well, look, if, if you need more money, go to your voters and ask them, and if they approve it, then that's it. So, I think that's what an increasing number of school districts are doing. They're finding, like we are, is that you can't exist forever on zero. And so, more and more, I think, I think it's encouraging that more and more voters in school districts all around the state, big and large, are supporting operational referendums. Brenda?
What's the difference between these two graphs? This, this graph with the dots and lines and the bar graph, you know?
One of, okay, and actually, the figures aren't the same, right?
Right, yes.
Because that's, I noticed, I noticed that too, and I called Dan back and I said, how come these don't add up? There were a number of districts, you find the top one has a greater number.
Yeah.
The top one, some of, I think, four or five school districts had more than one operational referendum in a year. That's why the number's slightly larger.
Really?
Yes.
Really? Wow.
Well, he said, like, there were a couple that went, like, in spring went along with, you had a construction referendum, and then there was an operational referendum to staff and equip it.
Oh, for the, yeah.
And then in the fall, they had an operational referendum for general purposes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
That's, that's why that chart is, has more number.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any, any questions on any of that? All right, thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next, we have district events. I don't know if there's anything anyone would like to announce. Seeing none, we'll move on to system reports. First, teaching and learning, which will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We had no action items, but we did have a presentation on pupil nondiscrimination, self-evaluation. They covered three main topics, counseling practices and methods, co-curricular participation, and trends and patterns in scholarships and other forms of recognition and achievement. It's a good presentation. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Katie. Next, organizational support, that will be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you. Under, excuse me, organizational support first, you have two action items that are discussed at length last, or two weeks ago. First recommendation is that the use of copyright materials policy 771.1 and guidelines for the use of copyright materials, Exhibit 771.1, exhibit as presented, be approved.
Second?
Any questions? All right, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
And the second recommendation in this area is that the intellectual property policy 771.2, as presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
I have a.
Oh, go ahead.
Did we, and I received an email question about situations where there would be a, in what case would there be a, a course requirement for a student to, did, did that get modified or is that still in there?
Mr. Becker's referring to a question we had from a student at John Dewey Academy of Learning regarding the policy, who had a concern over the note in the intellectual property policy that for the majority of student work, that it would not be considered intellectual property. There was one caveat that if the school course guide had indicated that the course required students to assign that intellectual property to the district. Mr. Ho weighed in to the student on the email and indicated currently there is no requirements for any of our courses that students assign intellectual property to the district.
So, my, my question about that is, why, why would we ever, why would we ever do that? And assuming if we wouldn't ever do it, why would we even reference it in, in here?
Well, I, I can think of potential circumstances given our pathways where we're developing products. We have other school districts, you know, their robot programs or various different programs where there's teacher involvement and student involvement. You could draft an intellectual property agreement where it's co-owned by the student and the school district. It's really just a reservation of rights, as we indicated in the email to everybody that that would be, need to be notice upfront, and I would think that we would have considerable dialogue over whether that, that should be a requirement of the course.
I guess my concern is that we're, I don't know if I even want the, the door to be opened that assigning the rights to the, the district as a condition for participation. I could see where, maybe if there's some kind of a business collaborative thing and a student has access to some proprietary materials and the, the business wants, wants that, I could see that, but I don't see where, I'm still struggling to find where it would be a good, where we'd have a situation where it's good to specifically that the student has to sign the ownership rights to the district.
Do you have any examples of what, of a district that did that, specific example?
I do not have a specific example.
Just, I was just curious.
This was in several of the model policies that we reviewed. And as I said, currently, we don't have that situation. We, we would need to provide notice to our students and our parents, and I would hope that we would have a very good dialogue as to whether that was a necessary requirement of the course.
If it's not a, currently, there's no, there's nothing in any courses that, that holds that, that says it, okay. If there were any intent for that to happen, wouldn't that have to come through the curriculum process for board approval in any case?
Yes. And through the course book approval process, correct.
Okay, so, if it were objectionable to the board for that to happen, I mean, it would be addressed at that time.
Right.
And then addressed on a very specific case, right?
Right.
Instead of abstract, yeah.
So, basically, what I'm saying is that an instructor can't unilaterally say that you're going to have to sign this as a requirement of the course because this, this would be something that would have to be approved curriculum.
Correct.
So. So, there's a safety, safety valve in there.
Aye.
All right, Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Here are human resources. We have several recommendations, which again, we'll discuss before. The first recommendation is that the maintenance mechanic, additional controls technician job description as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Next recommendation is that a 0.12 percent base wage increase for educators retroactive to July 1, 2016 for those who are employed as of February 20th, 2017, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Next recommendation is that an additional salary increase for educators not to exceed a toll of 1 percent of the base wage to include the 0.12 percent base wage increase retroactive to July 1, 2016 for those who were employed as of February 20th, 2017, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Next is that a 1.0 percent salary increase for all steps for administrators retroactive to July 1, 2016 for those who are employed as of February 20th, 2017, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Next is that a 1.0 percent salary increase for all steps for managers, technical and professional staff, retroactive to July 1, 2016 for those who are employed as of February 20th, 2017, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Next is the 1 percent salary increase for executives assistants retroactive to July 1, 2016 for those who are employed as of February 20th, 2017, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Last is that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Brenda? Yes. I just wanted to comment, there are a lot of familiar names, good people who gave a lot of years of service to our district and this good set agenda.
Other retirees?
Yeah.
Oh.
A lot of familiar names.
All right, we do have a closed session. I'll read that motion. Special Board Meeting Closed Session has been scheduled for Monday, February 20th, immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee with which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f) considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where Paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(e) deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit potential contracts. Meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Doris? Wagner?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried 6-0.